We're all set?
You're on.
Okay, the Newton zoning board of adjustments call to order at 7:00 PM. Please take attendance, Jim.
Mr. Sylvia?
Present.
Mr. Hamel?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Present.
Mr. Kozak?
Here.
Ms. White?
Present.
And Ms. Reardon?
Present.
Mr. Gibbs is excused.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Reardon to replace, excuse Mr. Gibbs, as a voting member. We'll start the evening off with a preliminary review of James Ryan of Two Laurel. Did you read that out, Jim?
James Ryan of Two Laurel Lane is requesting a public hearing for relief from Article 25, Section 1, location on lot for a garage. The lot is referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 5, Lot 1-2. Mr. Ryan is present.
Good evening, Jim Ryan of Two Laurel Lane. Could I take this opportunity to speak to the board?
Yeah.
Okay, as many of you know, I'm an amateur classic car enthusiast. I like to buy and drive vintage American muscle cars. I put many of them in our local parades at every opportunity, and all my cars are registered, insured, inspected, and I drive them regularly. I currently have a 1,200 square foot, three-bay garage on my property. When I built my garage, I could have built a commercial-looking metal garage for a fraction of the cost, but I wanted to have it fit the neighborhood, and I wanted it to serve the rural charm that exists on that end of Bartlett Street. It's a dead-end street with one neighbor across from me and one neighbor a quarter of a mile down the road over the tracks. Sadly, I've outgrown this garage. The addition that I'm proposing would be a two-bay addition on the left side of the existing garage. I have the same, it would have the same look and the same consideration for aesthetics and overall neighborhood value and curb appeal. It would definitely portray a residential feel, exhibiting lots of character and removing any commercial garage look. I respectfully request a variance that would allow me to put 22 feet of the proposed structure inside the wetland buffer. The buffer that makes up this area is basically flat, high, dry lawn area. There's no flora or fauna there, just grass and boulders. The actual wetlands area holds water during wet years, but most years, there's been no standing water, and the soil has been dried out completely. If built as proposed, this would leave a 27-foot buffer to the wetlands, an area I would take all precautions to protect. I would build the addition on the opposite side of the garage, but I would have to move a retainer wall that would destabilize an in-ground pool. It would also require moving propane lines and a propane tank. No mechanical work or bodywork is or will be done on the cars stored within the structure. It is strictly a clean, dry, secure, tastefully designed building to store vehicles in, and it will preserve the residential look of my property and the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
You see where this is going?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, this is the existing garage.
Okay, alright.
It's actually 28-feet buffer will be left over.
Jim, did you ever think of making it maybe only one? One bay as opposed to two to cut it back to?
Well, I did consider that, cost-wise, and I know I'll outgrow that instantly, but the other reason is too that two bays is probably only, like, one bay is 2/3 of the cost of two bays. I know I'll outgrow it in no time as well.
Any questions on a preliminary review, people?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Where do you enter this addition from?
Well, the proposed entrance would just be part of the original curb cut. It's just a width, a widening of the driveway after it goes into the property. It would go in and turn to the left.
This is his current garage right here.
I'm aware of the width restrictions on driveway.
Yeah, so he would just go in this way.
So that would be additional alteration to the buffer zone?
The driveway wouldn't be in the buffer zone.
Right.
Oh, actually, no.
Well, if it goes all the way to the entrance.
But yeah, but it wouldn't impact the curb.
Right.
At the curb it wouldn't, but at the structure, you would be, there would be additional.
Yeah, it wouldn't go all the way to the.
Right, it would go all the way.
It would probably be 20 feet.
Right.
So that means like 19 feet into the buffer with the driveway.
Right.
How do you get to the garage now?
The driveway.
Okay.
And I have a swale and a culvert pipe and probably what led to some of the water.
And just, Mr. Chair, just so you know, Conservation is planning a site walk. He's on our agenda already for next Wednesday. I have been down there, but obviously my vote, I can't vote, I'm one person. But I reviewed it and understand what he's doing, and Conservation will deal with it next Wednesday, just in case you want input from us.
So the edge of wetland was laid out by whom?
I just had it done by Bob Macy, Haverhill. He's out of Haverhill, but he's a Mass and New Hampshire guy. And it was pinned by a guy right here in Newton. He pinned it, and then Macy or Ram Engineering put it on paper.
Did Mike Seacamp pin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he did it. I just did that, I did that this year.
Do we need a stamp from the?
Well, that is stamped.
Well, it's stamped by an engineer, but not a soil scientist.
Yeah, the soil scientist pinned it, and then this engineer.
That the plan need to be stamped by the soil scientist?
Well, all I know is the guy that pinned it sent his drawings over to Ram, and Ram put them on paper.
I did talk to Mike Seacamp, too. We can always ask Mike, but I think if that's something that has to be done from Mike Seacamp as a professional, even though this guy Macy took all Mike Seacamp's pins, we can probably ask Mike to give us a copy of what he did. I don't think that's a problem. He's local. He deals with so many committees here, right here in town. He lives on Elm Street, Newton. So he does a lot, knowing the town, knowing wetlands, and I'm sure that's why he, this Robert Macy, although I don't know him. Is he in Haverhill?
Yeah, Bob Macy, yeah. So Seacamp came up and did all the soil sampling, put all the ribbons up, and then Ram Engineering came up and did the drawings.
Okay.
That, yeah, that noted on the plan that Seacamp did the. I was just basically asking the technical question of, does the plan have to be stamped?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, definitely.
I mean, the guy's already done the work. It's just a matter of getting his stamp on the plan.
Yeah, I think this happened a little while ago in one of our applications.
The other question I've got is you said, in order to put the addition on the other side, it would require some alteration to a retaining wall.
Yeah, I would have to.
But I don't see the retaining wall on the plan.
So on the other side of the wall, on the other side of the garage, there's a retainer wall that would need to be dismantled, and that's basically holding back a hill.
Yes. Where's the retaining wall?
So you can't see the retaining wall, but what you can see is you can see that it goes from 130, and then it drops four feet to the edge of the garage to 126.
So the pool would be.
So you can see that there's a.
If we touch that wall.
And that's a major, a major thing to do it, to do that, after being at your property.
I would guess it's the hard line.
You might want to do a site walk there.
Contour, see how it's weird.
So at the 128 is where you.
I would guess, because that's where it is. It slopes down two feet, and then there's a two-foot drop to.
Again, should that, should that be marked on here? Because when I first looked at it, my first inclination was, why the heck don't you put it on that side there?
That would be simpler. There's also a propane tank there.
Yeah, there's lots of lines there. Your utility lines are there, too. It would be worth doing a site walk, Mr. Chair.
20 feet from the wetlands outdated right there.
27, 26.
Mr. Chair, it would be worth doing a site walk because even though I had talked to Jim about it, once I got there and looked at the property, it gives a whole different.
You're suggesting a site walk from the.
From us.
Okay.
Because then you can see why he put it where it is. The other way would be, number one, it would be a hardship financially. It would be unbelievable, but also we'd have probably site setback issues, the road agent, because it's near the corner. You're getting closer to the corner.
Well, he's not going to change the curb cut.
No, but if you're putting it on the other side, that's going to, that's going to affect short will. How are you going to get to the garage? Fly?
Because what he's going to do is the curb cut's going to be the same width, and then it's going to widen out.
I'm just saying we should do a site walk. That's my recommendation.
When is the conservation going?
Wednesday.
So we're going Wednesday.
When this coming, this?
He's on the agenda for Wednesday, and we're going to set the date for the site walk on Wednesday, as well as Coleman's property. That's all Wednesday.
Okay. Does everybody agree that we should do a site walk?
I'm open to a site walk.
I'm open to it.
I want to try to pick some time.
I've already, I've marked it with a string just so you can visualize where the addition will go. Just in case, I did that for her. I didn't know if they were going over there or when, so plus it would help me visualize where the garage would end up. But it's all just like almost a lawn area, except that the trees stopped the grass from growing, but.
Yeah, but that retaining wall is large, too.
On the other side, yeah.
Yes, on the other side.
I can't, I just wouldn't build it if I had to go to that side.
It would ruin the whole look of your house, yeah.
I've got wetlands all around my whole park. Like real, that's why there's.
That's not bad, no. Beyond that, going towards the railroad tracks.
34 years that I lived here, there was no water there. Just the last two years.
And it's got a natural contour.
Yeah.
And this is the 120.
And we have had a wet year.
Till you get here, and then you can see where it's like.
People have water where they never had water before.
It continues its natural contour, so I'm assuming. But you can't see it from the aerial.
Now, would we like to put some, anything that we need from Jim for next meeting?
Can I ask just another question? On number three criteria?
Actually, you shouldn't be because you're not in the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Well, there's nothing there for me to read. That's my question. Should there be something for each one of these criteria?
Okay, so you.
I see what you mean.
I would like the applicant to fill that in. Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't phrase that correctly.
Granted, the variance would do substantial justice, and it's blank.
I'm sorry?
Come over here, Jim, I'll tell you. There's nothing on number three.
I do the variance, I do substantial. I don't really understand the, what is that justice?
Substantial justice, that's how you.
If the benefit to you outweighs the benefit, the loss of benefit to the community. I mean, the idea of the wetland buffer is to protect the wetland. So you're going to, we're going to lose some protection of the wetland, but the benefit to you outweighs the loss of the public to the.
We need to be an opportune time and fill that out. That's fine.
Before the next meeting?
Before the next meeting.
Okay. Would I be, actually, we need to move to another meeting?
Yes, this is just, this is a preliminary. We won't be voting on it tonight. There might be some specifications, like, do we want to add that we need to stamp on the plans for next week?
What is that stamp called?
It's by the wood engineer.
Yeah, so if you just call Mike Seacamp and say, ZBA is requesting him stamp the plan, he'll know what you mean.
Wetland scientist.
Right. Yeah, so basically, when you have, when you do the edge of wetlands, not only does the engineer need to make the plans, but the wetland, the soil scientist also has to say.
He would probably have to look at those and approve them?
Yeah, right. Basically, what he would be saying is, he's already flagged it, and this is what he flagged.
That's my, that's the as-built stamped.
Right.
And if he gets a copy of what your engineer did, he can stamp that.
Okay, I'll look on that.
Are we all set?
Could I just have one more question? Number five, should subsection I be filled in as well as subsection III? Since there's an "and" word there?
Right, Mike also.
They're essentially the same.
Yeah.
So he only needs to fill in one of those, either of those?
So you don't select that bill, do you?
She's asking.
I'm asking.
They're supposed to be.
Okay.
I'll work with the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
So the only thing we're looking for from the applicant is the stamp.
And completing the application.
And a complete applicant, application.
And then the next thing we've got to do is decide if we're going to do a site walk when.
Yes.
Because we got to set a date tonight.
Right.
Well, not to be a Debbie Downer, but do we need a, procedurally, we need a completed application in order to decide if we're going to take jurisdiction?
I think the application is complete enough. Like, if they're actually not taking, we don't take jurisdiction. Your other job's going to take jurisdiction. But I think with the information we have and the additions that he has to provide, that can all easily be done so that we can go to public hearing.
I just want to make sure that procedurally.
Yeah, right, we're good to go to public hearing as long as we, but before we make that motion, we need to decide about the site walk.
Show some dates out, people. Who's got a calendar? Anybody have one?
I got a calendar.
Yeah.
What day of the week would you like to do it on?
I'll give you the dates. Mondays, the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th.
Mondays aren't good for, Mondays and Thursdays are not good for me.
Well, technically, I'm.
So you have the. Tuesdays are the 13th, 20th, and 27th. Thursdays are the 15th, the 22nd, and the 29th. Sorry, and the.
Can I ask the board if they have a time of day in mind? Or is this going to be another morning, late morning?
Yeah, let's, can we do it early? I'm up very early, but I'm not sure how everybody else.
Because that would.
We'll warn people that next Tuesday into Wednesday, there is supposed to be a major snowstorm.
Wednesday, I have a doctor's appointment. I'm out Tuesday. How about Thursday morning at 8:00?
Thursday's not.
He's out first.
I'm sorry, what?
Thursday is no good for me. I'm busy Thursday mornings and Monday mornings and Thursday mornings.
How about this Friday?
Yeah, how about?
Friday is the night.
How about this Friday?
This Friday. Does that work for everybody?
Works to me.
So you're talking about two days from now?
Two days from now.
Days from now.
Do you need me there?
If you'd like to be there?
Won't be there.
Okay.
What time will it be?
Can we do it early in the morning at 8:00?
What works for you?
I can do 9:00.
8 to 9.
Or after.
John said he can do 9:00. I'm flexible.
I can do 9:00 or later. I just have to drop the kids off at school.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can do 9:00.
I can do 9:00.
9:00, 9:00 o'clock?
You'd be home from 9:00, at 9:00 for?
Wouldn't be there at 9:30, that's all.
Oh, oh, want to make it 9:30?
Yeah.
Sorry, Jack.
Okay.
An hour and a half behind schedule.
Okay.
Who's making that motion?
I'll motion for a site walk Friday the 9th at 9:30 at Two Laurel Lane, or actually more.
Really go to Bartlett.
Bartlett Street.
Yeah, right.
I'll get there first, look for my car.
Technically, you are going to Two Laurel Lane because that is the Russell.
Yeah, but if they go there, they won't see what he's talking about.
Well, actually, if you go down before, they'll see cars. Nobody will be home.
Yeah, no, go to Bartlett.
Yeah, the garage is on Bartlett Street.
Yeah, I'll sit in front of the garage.
Did someone make the motion?
I'll second their motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous.
And then.
Someone make a motion to move the, move the application to public hearing on, from March 6?
I'll motion, provided that we have the requirement stated before, which I believe was a stamp from the soil engineer, soil scientist, and a completed application. Right?
Yes.
Did I miss anything?
Stamp of the soil scientist showing the retaining wall on the plan, completing Criteria 3 and Criteria 5.
Did we say that, or are you saying that?
That's what they've said during the conference.
You want the, you want the retainer wall put on it?
Actually, I.
Said that.
Now that John has sort of pointed out where it is, I think I can see it on the plan.
I think between the site visit and.
Yeah.
Well, we won't make them redraw the plan.
Because that's another person I have to, that's Ram. I'd have to go back to him and pay more money to have it put on there, but whatever.
Okay, so the deficiencies are the stamp of the soil scientist and filling in Criteria 3 and 5 II.
Understood.
And the date is March 6th for the next meeting, for the public meeting. Did Johnny, did somebody make, did somebody second that?
He did. Oh, okay, I'll second.
What'd you say, March 6th what?
March 6th.
That's the meeting that will be here.
Where we'll vote on it.
Oh, okay, I thought we said March 5th, all right.
Take a roll, Carl, vote, Jim.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Preliminary meeting.
Thanks, Jim.
I will be posting this tonight.
Next is a public meeting for Ann Myers. Jim, is there anybody here representing Ann Myers? Okay.
Yes.
Might want to take the podium? Jim, you want to read it off, please?
Ann Myers of Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for relief from Section 14 of zoning specifically allowed to live in her existing home while building a new one on the same property. The property is referenced as Tax Map 12, Block 2, Lot 17.
Does anybody have, before we read the variance request, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Doggett, read off the.
I think before we begin to go through the criteria, I'd like to have a general discussion of possible conditions which may change how we consider. Oh, well, first of all, are you closing the public hearing?
I already closed the public hearing, yes.
So we're into deliberation.
That's a good idea. We talked about that.
So I think we should talk about possible conditions before we go through the criteria because the conditions may change how we view the criteria.
Excuse me for one minute, I left a paper on my desk. No, I have everything else. The criteria sheet is sitting on my desk.
Okay, we can talk about that. We're talking about the.
That is because our biggest concern was that, I know your plan is to build the house and then tear down the old house. And most of us, I think, are fine with that. The problem is, we need assurance that the old house will get torn down. And one of the ways that, we had sort of talked a little bit about it last week, was in order to, before you can get a occupancy permit for the new house, you would have to place a bond with the town to ensure that the old house will be torn down in a timely manner. And if the house was not torn down in a timely manner, then the town would take the bond.
Can we respond to that?
Actually, we should have not closed the public hearing and talked about this in the public hearing section.
But this is a public.
Yeah, okay, so we're still in the public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so yes.
So we understand that the town, I don't think that Ann should be held responsible for the town not enforcing the other two people in the town who built a house and didn't rip it down. I mean, that's on you guys. The onus of that is enforcement by Newton to enforce those two homes are ripped down. So as far as a bond goes, because somebody else didn't do something in the town, and the town isn't enforcing their rules and regulations, she's going to have to burden, a financial burden that she shouldn't have to. We're more than willing, you also talked about having your attorney draw something up that she would more than willingly sign because she's going to go from one house right to the other house. The foundation's in. I mean, I'm sure you guys have driven by, seen it. And it's already been signed off on. Everything's good. We're waiting to go forward, and we can't go forward without the building permit. So the other thing, I believe it was Tricia that brought it up, which I thought, instead of making Ann, you know, I mean, she's spending a lot of money right now to build a house. It's not like she has an excess bucket of cash to give the town a bond. So Tricia had said, why don't you give a temporary occupancy permit? Because she's going to literally go from that house down the hill and, you know, make it 90 days or whatever many you want. And then if she, once she gets into that house, if that house isn't down in 90 days, maybe there can be something. It's going to be, so I'm not worried about it. I mean, just, she's not going to live there. It's going down. We've already spoken to the state. His, John's concern was about the SEPT deck, and I talked to the state about it, and, you know, what they do, what I told you the last time is absolutely correct. The state has no real hard and fast regulations on it, except that it gets pumped out, and it either gets crushed.
Crushed.
Yeah, so basically, I think a fair compromise is that we do what Tricia said and do a temporary occupancy permit and give, you know, 90 days to get that house down. And she will sign something, and if, sign something with the town, have your attorney draw it up. And if that, if it can't be taken down, and that, it will be, then levy a fine on her there. But to have to come up with a bond for the town while you're building a house, I think that financial burden isn't fair to her because you guys aren't enforcing your regulations to the other people.
But we don't enforce things. We don't have any power to enforce it.
But the town, there's somebody in the town who's supposed to be enforcing that. So basically, Ann's getting punished because other people were naughty, and they're not being held accountable. And I don't think that's really fair.
I think you definitely do make a good point, and I think you almost hit the nail on the head. I think it's, I think the bigger thing that we have is that we don't have anything in place, to my knowledge, to hold them accountable.
That is correct.
So this is what we're trying to establish.
Right.
And I think that's the only flaw in your argument, to be honest with you. I think it's just a matter of switching out a few words. And I do think that's a bigger picture that, you know, we do need to solve, but I don't know what the answer is right now.
And that's why we talked about a bond.
Because if you talk about a temporary occupancy permit, how does that get enforced?
We're right back into the same thing.
We're right back.
Trust me.
Force it.
We force it how?
Yeah.
So he would come down. There's a certain amount of time she's going to be out of that house. And again, I get what everyone's saying. However, we're living right now in an economy that's very difficult. And in the past, I'm kind of backtracking a little bit. And I want to say it was probably 15 years ago and I'm not going to say the address, might have been longer than that. Somebody came up just like this.
Yes.
It was a family and they wanted to build a house on the property for the daughter and they were told that they had to demolish the other house before they were built. They, they stood so set fast.
Yeah.
There has to be some wiggle room and, and I don't, wiggle room is probably the wrong word.
Know what you're saying.
We're living in an economy that's very difficult now and.
Because essentially what you're saying is, you know, if we go down the criteria, it's a more unnecessary hardship.
Right, right.
And I don't disagree with that.
Right, and Sam, you know, is our code enforcement. And what Roger's saying, okay, so what do we do? Well, you know what? That's up to code enforcement, not us. We're not establishing his policy. Maybe he's going to say, you know what, I'm going to put a cease and desist on this house if it isn't, the other one isn't taken down in, I don't know, 30 days. But that's not, we're not doing his job.
Right.
And even if we put a bond in, it's still going to be on Sam to go to the selectmen to pull the bond.
Execute the law.
Yeah.
Because, because we, we can't.
I agree.
I just think, again, I'm going to say it again, in this economy, and I'm going to use, and I think I said it in our last meeting, you know, with my other hat on in real estate. If the state figured that, okay, we've got hardships with separate septic systems and the timing isn't always, you know, there when you put in a septic, when you sell a house and you have to put in a septic system, even the state gives you six months to get it done. So I think they've realized there's some kind of hardships. We should realize that, again, that there's a hardship and give it to Sam however we word it and let Sam decide. He can put a cease and desist. It's very easy to do.
But, but. Tell them to leave the house if they're living there and the.
That's what I mean. I mean.
Not going to happen.
It, it is not enforceable under those circumstances.
Exactly.
Because you're, you're basically talking about an addiction art.
Right.
Right, but again.
That's not going to happen.
That's not going to happen and I'm using that as an example. He's going to call it something else, but again, we shouldn't be doing his job.
Well, I don't think we're, I don't think.
Because it's still.
We're giving the town the buffer.
If we put the bond in, it's still his job.
Exactly.
To go to the selectmen to, to, to pull it, but it gives him something to do rather, because if, if, if the building doesn't come down.
Can, can, can we?
We.
Can we make something in our recommendation where, you know, we have this idea of a bond, right, which is money sitting there, blah, blah, and I'll be honest with you, the, the monetary value of the bond, whereas I think the value that is recommended is definitely a hardship. I also don't see it as being enough to remove what's there. So that.
What would it cost?
I think it's somewhere around $50,000.
So you are way off.
I think to remove the foundation and everything and truck the materials out.
You crush, you remove and fill, so you're off.
So, all right, so you're going to remove and fill. I'm, I'm operating under truckloads of material being removed from the site.
You'll be some.
Same fill brought in.
Certain debris out of there.
Regardless, I'm, I'm saying, even at the, the low number that we have as a recommendation, I think it's a hardship. I don't disagree with you. I'm not, you know, we could, and I don't, I'm not a demo guy by any means. I tried to make some calls to get a, a realistic number that we knew was accurate. Unfortunately, I couldn't. But I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, can, can it be worded as in lieu of a bond, you know, we have this 90-day idea or something.
Or whatever.
Move in. So in lieu of a bond, they have 90 days to demo the house. If it's not demoed within that window, an X amount of fine is put on the card and then they don't have to post a bond, but it still holds them accountable for some sort of monetary value. I just don't know if that's even an option yet.
You, you, you don't have the option to fine.
That's the problem.
Okay.
Can the town attorney draw, you must have a town attorney, right? Do you have a town attorney?
Yeah.
Yes.
Kind of. So can the town attorney, attorney draw up an agreement that she, that Ann signs that will hold her accountable and then in that agreement, I mean, she's got to go out of that house and get in that house and pull everything over. So 90 days, I think, is probably enough time to get her over there and get the house down. So if they draw something up like that, can he draw up an agreement that if she breaches that agreement, then after 90 days she has to post a bond? It's kind of like the compromise between the two. Like if the house is not down, the occupancy permit, 90 days after the occupancy permit is issued, if the house isn't down, then a bond needs to be furnished to the town.
I, I don't think the selectman would go for that, to be perfectly honest with you.
Mr. Chair, so in keeping to, what, what's your first name? I know.
I'm Kitty.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yep.
Um, what Kitty's saying is, you know, I have seen in other towns, and I'm going to specifically say Kingston, that when something similar to this happens and the, say the drop dead date is 90 days, after the 90 days, the town can actually do a per diem fine and I've seen that.
That's what I was.
$250 a day. And, and I can talk to somebody in Kingston and see how they created that, but that might be an option.
That's what I was saying, like, you know, as far as the fine.
And I know it can be done because they've done it.
It is, but.
I don't know what category.
Let's take it out of structure. You have Sam and that's it. And Sam's still part-time and.
But he's doing great keeping up with that.
I, I agree. I, you know, I, I.
You know, it's not like he's got a zillion things going on. He's doing good. So.
Enough, nothing, you know, whether we have a full time or a part time, it shouldn't have a bearing on whether or not.
Right, exactly. That's not their fault.
Yeah.
We got to deal with it. And again, and I'm saying Kingston didn't use the word fine and I, so I have to find out how they, but they said a per diem of $250 a day will be paid. So I'll have to look up how they worded that, but I can do that.
I mean, and, and here's the other thing. Does, does does Sam have jurisdiction to attach that to the approved building permit? And I'm just throwing it out there because if we can.
That's a good point.
If we had, and I don't know that he does, but we could, go ahead, Jim.
Oh, I was just going to say, we have people giving varying opinions. This, that subject needs to be researched before you can use it because if you make it a condition.
Right, well, and that's the other part of this is like.
Cannot be done.
Well, here's a different question. When are you planning on building the house?
As soon as they get the permit.
As soon as you, we get the permit. We want to start on the house.
And, and that's why.
March 1st or before. The, they're, they're over there now. They just finished up the foundation and so.
And as, as a resident that had his construction delayed for a really long time with a lot of BS.
That's why you're on this committee.
I, I, I want, yeah, it's really how I became.
That's right.
Here.
It's very frustrating.
Going through all these boards and trying to make sense of this. So I, I empathize for you a lot.
Right.
And I understand delays in construction are extremely stressful. I happen to have like 10 people in my house at the time in addition to that, so. As much as I want to.
But, but.
As much as I want to, I, I want to try to get this pushed through for them so they can keep going, but at the same token, I don't know how.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, if we go with some creative solution, we basically cannot approve it tonight.
That's correct.
We would have to, because we would have to continue it to research what other creative solutions we might be able to put in place. And, and then, so we'd have to postpone the month.
Can I ask a question? Can you make the, like, just so we don't get delayed because you know what it's like? Can you just make the bond something that she can do, like 10 grand or something like that for right now?
Let me, let me ask you this.
Okay, the, the suggestion that we had started with was 20, but, but you're saying 10 might be something which would be palatable or, or doable.
But it won't make it happen.
Yeah. Okay, and I, I do have another question. If, if we go that way, would you be placing the bond as a, a cash bond or would you do a letter of credit? Because then I, I want to talk about what, what the condition of a letter of credit would be.
Before we go down that route, I have a question. The contractor that's building your house is also demolishing your house.
No, no, well, the guy who's, he's the contractor.
Yep.
The excavator, the guy who's done all the excavation and the site work.
Yep.
Merrill excavation on sale.
Yep.
They're the ones.
And now your contract that you have for this house is, do you have a separate contract with Merrill excavation for the demolition?
Yes.
So in theory.
They're not tied together. The building, the building is.
So in theory, Merrill excavation could get paid by us if they just shifted that money from Merrill into the bond. Merrill gets paid when they complete the work and we have a guarantee. And that way it's not an extra $20,000 or whatever it is, right? So basically, if the town gets a quote to demo it from Merrill, they post the that quote.
I don't think.
Money.
John Merrill, John Merrill is actually a personal friend of hers too, so I don't think that's going to fly.
Okay.
What, did he give you a price of it, of the demolition?
He's giving us a price as we go, so, and he will know.
Yes, Jim.
Two things I want to explain. The $20,000 that is shown in my recommendation was based on their discussion with the applicant about having the fire department utilize the house for a burn practice. And then the fire department would burn the structure into the cellar hole. The $20,000 covers the cost to sort of crush the, once it's pumped, crush the septic and bulldoze everything in. And that was just from two calls. I made two calls to two companies that do that sort of thing. They suggested that $20,000 probably, but they could not give an exact figure. The thing with a performance guarantee, if it's posted in cash or actually even if it's posted in a letter of credit, is any, any cost of the town above that would simply be applied as a lien against the property by the town.
So.
Therefore, the property could never be sold without the town's lien being satisfied. And that would be, I believe, at 18%. So it becomes.
And, and my, my thing about if the, the bond doesn't necessarily have to cover all of the costs, it's just to ensure there was an, incentivize it moving along.
Right, and, and knowing that.
I mean, e- even if, if we went from 20 to 10, there's still a big enough incentive. So that, that would sort of satisfy.
Well, I think.
My, my issue.
I think with a lien. And then a lien again, one more time, Jim.
Excuse me?
So.
The lien.
The lien would be placed by the board, would actually be placed by the court on the, at the request of the, the Board of Selectmen. If the town has to go in and actually tear down the building, then the town will, will bid it out. It won't be.
Right.
The town will have $10,000 towards that cost and whatever cost was above and beyond would be applied as a lien on the house.
So in reality, as long as there's a monetary value on the bond, we have means to.
To make it happen.
To make it happen. So, I mean, that, is that what I'm understanding?
It has to be a realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes, Mary.
So if we require a bond, when does she have to put up the bond?
I would suggest it be put up as a condition of getting the occupancy permit.
Yeah.
So she wants to put it up next week.
I would say prior to occupancy.
It would be after the.
But, 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 but.
Before she gets.
When she goes to apply for the occupancy permit, she has to present the bond.
Okay, all right. So if she does present a bond of whatever value, I, I can't, I can't recognize.
Yes, Jim.
She has to.
I would advise against that because.
Against what? Doing it now, I keep.
Okay.
This is the first time the ZBA has, usually these have happened in front of the planning board. But what happens is, quite honestly, we have two houses in the town of Newton that the planning board said, you know, made it a condition of approval for their applications that, you know, you have 30 days after you get your occupancy to tear down the building. They haven't.
So what, did this go through planning?
These people have moved into the new structures. One of them is renting out.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, has this application gone through planning?
No, because this application has nothing for the planning board.
Is it, doesn't it trigger a major site plan? Am I?
Yeah.
No, it has not, there, there are no.
Okay.
The only issue is the two residences on one property. That is not a planning board issue.
But none of those other homes put up a $10,000 bond. So if we put, I'm not worried about it because I know the house is coming down. You guys don't know that and you have problems that the town needs to deal with. Okay, it's, it's not, but the sins of the father should not become, you know, our problem. So I think if we can split the difference and give you a $10,000 bond, and trust me, she's not going to be able to lose $10,000. Who can lose $10,000? You know what I mean? Like, and, and you guys grant our building permit so we can start building and, and she'll, if she has to give you the bond, when can you give the bond? She'll give it tomorrow. She has to, just to get this going.
And, and, and this is not a, it's not a, a family of a bunch of people. It's just me.
Right.
No, and, and I, and I think, and I do feel bad because I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I think it's just, yeah, you're right. It has gone south prior to that and that's why we're being extra cautious so that we don't do the same thing again. I wasn't particularly in a seat when these other instances happen, but I, you know, I like to pride myself and I think all the other board members sitting here like to pride themselves on, on trying to get it right and trying to be fair. And unfortunately, this is just one of those where it's, we're kind of spinning our wheels trying to.
Grand that the town holds in escrow, of course, because it should be collecting something while you're holding it for her.
You, you get that.
Yeah, okay.
We, 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 if you give us a cash bond, when, when you get the bond back, you also get the interest.
I've never had to do a bond, so I don't know. I just want to make sure.
Right?
I mean, it would just be like.
They get the interest that the town collects.
Right, yeah.
To expedite this, you now have $10,000 worth of incentive. Okay? She gets her building permit. There's a foundation sitting there waiting for someone to do something with it and we get to go forward and the town has something in their kitty in case, you know, she doesn't take it down. I know other people have told you.
And, and again, I don't think any of the board members here intend this to be insulting you guys' character at all. And I can understand.
Nothing personal.
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Trying to fix another problem and unfortunately that problem's become our problem. So how do we deal with it in a fair and equitable way?
Yeah. Yes.
Because I don't know either. How, how does she, how long's it take to get the bond back if she moves into her new house and they come in in a week?
I don't know.
Knock it down?
Don't we?
How long does it take?
Yeah.
Well, it's a matter of.
Where's, where's it go?
Either, I don't know. Actually, in this case, would Sam be able to say it's done or does it have to come here to say it's done? To tell the selectmen to release the bond, to tell Lisa to check.
It'll take a month.
Yeah.
Take a month.
It'll take a month.
Take a month.
Yeah. I, I think, can we just put it in that Sam?
At the building is.
Can execute, you know, satisfactory conditions to release the bond?
That, that comes to here and the board makes a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to release the bond.
So it has to come here?
Why does it have to come here? Why can't Sam do it if we're putting it in his?
Excuse me?
Can we put it in the?
Why can't we put it in Sam's lap? Why, so now we're.
Why can't we put it in Sam's lap? Why, so now we're dealing with more meetings? Why can't Sam just do it? Once he's realized it's been corrected, it's demolition, now he can go to the selectmen. If he has to come here first and then we have to tell him to the selectmen, they meet twice a month and then the manifest is, you know.
And we only meet once a week.
We don't know, we don't know if Sam would want to, if that's something new for the building inspector.
Condition of, that is issued by the ZBA and only the ZBA can declare it fulfilled.
Yeah.
Even though we're throwing it in his lap?
Sounds like we got a little bit of town bylaws to.
See the person. Right. When you see like, the, that it's, just so if we have to jump through seventeen hundred hoops. When you guys see, Sam can go go down and go, oh yeah, there's an excavator there, smashing down that house. He knows it's in process. Once he knows that's in process, can he come to you guys while it's in process? Because obviously no one's gonna be living in it if there's an excavator.
Yeah, because it's, that's the other thing, it's gonna take them two, three weeks to get them.
If you want a controlled burn, we're gonna know right away, I work at the fire department, so.
Because he, he's gonna walk it, the chief's gonna walk it. And then he's gonna chase on all the signatures for the occupancy permit.
Yeah, we gotta go to dig safe, yeah.
And then, and then, and then nobody knows where the occupancy permits are because I've already lost mine from my house.
I kicked you out.
It's like, I, listen, I, I know I have it, it got dropped off, it's in an envelope somewhere.
We'll give you the bond, please, please.
Okay.
It, Mr. Chair, in order to move this along, because I have pity, I'm against the bond. But it sounds like the only way we can move this along to the next phase, instead of doing research about just a per diem per day that would become a lien on the property, which I really think is better. Again, working with our residents, trying to keep things going easily in a difficult life that we live. But in order to move it on, if we have to do a bond because we know how that works, I guess I'm okay with it, I don't like it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Trish, I agree with what you said.
You know, I just, I mean, you went through this, that's why you were on this committee. If all of a sudden you stood here and we said, ah, yeah, you, you know, we want another twenty thousand bond, you know, you were about ready to shoot us then. So I, I.
And look at us now, we're dear friends, you know? No, I, 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 I distinctly remember being at that podium.
Yeah.
Through zoning, through planning, and then back through zoning and back.
With units, there was all kinds of things and you meet us, you went, had a nightmare.
I know, and I, and that's why I love the idea of, I mean.
Well, you could issue the building permit while you do your stuff, knowing that we sat here on a, on a recorded thing saying like, if, if you can't find that information and make it satisfactory to you guys.
Well, here's the thing, is if we don't, if we don't give them, if we don't give them something tonight.
Yep.
Then they got thirty more, then they got thirty more days.
I know.
And then even after that, they still got thirty days after that for somebody to contest it.
I know.
We're looking at two months if we don't do something tonight.
That's the only reason I would agree with this, even though I don't agree.
Yeah, I know. So, I mean, li- listen, I'm gonna be.
Keep blocking you, sorry.
I'm gonna just throw it out there. If the purpose of the bond is to cover that and anything additional is going to infer a lien, I'd even be okay with a smaller amount than ten thousand. And I'm just throwing that out there to the board. Because if, if that bond doesn't cover whatever, because I don't think that they're gonna not make good on what they intend to do. But in the event that they do, and Jim's telling us, then the excess gets leaned on the property and preventing a sale and blow.
At eighteen percent.
I, I, to me.
Yeah.
I don't think the, the value of the bond really much matters, especially on a brand new construction house.
Right. I agree.
But, but it still has to be something somewhat reasonable.
I, I'm just throwing it out there for the board to think about.
Well, somebody's gonna make a motion right after we go through all the criteria and we'll, we're ready to go through the criteria.
The origi- the original, uh, suggestion.
Yeah.
Was twenty grand.
Twenty thousand, yeah.
And that still was much less than it would cost, well, it, 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 from what Jim said, it, that might be a reasonable cost for the fire department to burn the house down and then to.
Infill it, yeah.
And you know.
So if, if twenty grand is a reasonable price, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with half of that. But I don't think I want to go a whole lot less than that.
I'm with you, Roger, yeah.
Well, I can tell you.
Yeah.
The Fire Marshal's office is gonna love the fact that we have the controlled burn, so that's gonna guarantee this house is coming down. So, I mean, if, if you need that, we, we can throw that into the mix, that's, you know.
But I, I don't think we, yeah, I think the whole.
If you trust us in our integrity, what does it matter if it's five grand, ten grand? What does it matter? It's coming down anyway. It's like, we are not those other people. And I agree with you, this poor woman, I just feel so bad for you.
I, I got PTSD right now.
One thing I should point out, I did not contact the fire.
She needs to be in that house.
Yeah, I contacted the fire department, no?
No.
Okay.
What, what happened?
No, and, and that, that, that basically.
That's just a wish.
Right, that, that.
Possibility, right.
I controlled one of these others with them and they went right on it, went, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh yeah, we've, I've done this before with them.
So we're kind of like kicking the number around five or ten thousand.
Right.
We have a.
Do we have anybody from the public that wants to comment?
You have something you want to say? Go ahead. State your name, please.
Rick Russell. I understand that we don't want to cause any hardships. Uh, we either have to, in order to protect the town, I think the board has to decide that either we're going to put a bond in place or we're not. I'm not gonna make that decision for you, I'm not even gonna tell you what to do. But, the thing is, if you ask the applicant that in order to get an occupancy permit, they have to give you a cash bond, that's gonna make them want to get the other building down as fast as they can. Right?
Yeah.
So this money that's in that bond is gonna go to the construction outfit that's tearing it down. The applicant, at that point, has to have the amount of money necessary at that point in time to take it down, so it's not a hardship for them. They're taking the money, putting it in the town account, so that if for some reason contractor walks away and does half the job, which, we've seen this done over and over again, I know I have in the business. And so they'd be in a hardship now because contractor's taken their money and gone, right? But if the town's holding money and the contractor has to complete it to our satisfaction, he can collect his money.
Yeah, but, but the, the contractor doesn't collect the money from, that's on the bond.
Right.
And, and the real problem gets to be, once the building is completely gone.
Yep.
Because of the, 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 the slow movement of the wheels of Newton, it's gonna take them a couple of months to get their, their money back.
That money's tied up, we don't get it back until after everything's said and done, and it could be thirty, sixty, eighty.
Jim's not reaching in his pocket and being like.
So I guess the.
I, I think the biggest thing for us is, is, I think we do need to make a decision. And I think any decision that isn't, doesn't allow them to get a building permit this month is probably a bad decision on our, our part, and that's my honest feeling. But I think bigger picture wise, procedurally as a town, I don't know, maybe, Jim, we can talk about this outside of this meeting, is figuring out when this comes up again and how to develop a procedure that's in place, that's on the town bylaws, that is clear and concise, so they don't have to, nobody has to sit through this again. That's kind of my bigger concern.
Yeah, th- this is a first time for the ZBA.
Yes.
Never be dealing.
So let me ask you this question then, if we took a cash bond, but she's taking money and giving to the town, say it's ten thousand dollars, right? To make it easier for them. And say it costs thirty thousand dollars to take down the old building. They have twenty thousand dollars in their pocket left over from their budget to give that contractor twenty thousand dollars. Most contractors, knowing that the town is holding the rest of the money, would be willing to wait if it took another sixty days.
Sorry, I'm just gonna step in here, I don't know what the heck you're talking about, it's not our budget. Like, you are incorrect in what you're stating, and I think a lot of people behind and in front of you are shaking their heads. We are taking money to give the town because of an incidence that the town has had on two different homes of which they don't have a policy and procedure in place, which they need to develop. So right now, so they don't have a third house, you know, because they took those people at their word, and I get it.
Remember, those were, some of those were done by the planning board, it was only one done by. Yeah, right.
Then you want, we're gonna give you some money, so we have a vested interest in getting that house down, I don't know what you're talking about.
So, yeah, he.
But, but it is your budget, that's what I'm saying. Give us an idea of what it costs for you to tear it down.
For you.
I'm a resident in this community that has a concern.
Take control.
Like, yes, but you're, you're concerned, like, does anybody else have?
I, so I, if I, if I may, yeah, so his thought process, as a guy that's in construction, you have a planned budget for the entire project. And, and in his thought process, and that was kind of why I was asking you about your contractor that's building the house, is it the same as your site guy? But, and I understand your situation's a little bit different. He's thinking along the lines, which I was earlier as well, of a normal general contractor process, you know, monthly, you get a chunk of money, you get a chunk of money as the job progresses, right?
At certain phases, they get.
So that's, that's where he was, was going with it.
Excavation.
Right.
Right. Right, I, I understand.
But I think he was asking, do you have a budget for that?
Yeah.
Question.
We have a budget.
For the excavation.
But we also have somebody who is.
Helping.
Who is helping her, who's a friend of hers.
Yeah.
That is working with her within her budget, and he's not gonna get paid by the town. Like, you, you, like, that's not gonna happen.
Right.
You know.
Right, no, it can't happen.
The timing's not right for that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's not right.
I, I, and I understand, you know.
We've done everything for you, we're supposed to do, by the book. You know, right now, everything is going great, so just decide how much money you want, and she'll give you a bond. So she can.
Jim?
You know, I want to remind you, it's technically not a bond, it's what's called a performance guarantee.
Yeah.
It's a monetary deposit or a letter of credit to guarantee that something is done.
Right.
Does it collect interest?
Excuse me?
Does it collect interest? If the town's holding that money, then it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And how does one pursue one of those bonds, Jim, from a bank? Is that an insurance company that gives those bonds out?
Not insurance companies, you either, it needs to either be a cash.
Just bond companies.
Deposit, or what's called a letter of credit.
Good.
Good, but there are bond companies that will issue a, a, um.
Letter of.
Performance letter of.
Those are surety bonds.
Are we ready to move forward?
Well, I think we need to first, I think Mr. Chairman has, needs to make sure that nobody else from the public has anything to say.
Yeah.
And then nobody else from the board has any further questions from the applicant.
Board members, do we want to move on to criteria? And we have a dollar amount somewhere on this board that we're, we're gonna vote on eventually.
Well.
Yeah, there's gonna.
We need to close the public hearing.
Well, 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 he, he, he's getting to there.
Oh, okay.
Getting to that, right.
You gotta do the last round of, of, of who's got questions.
So much, my head's spinning.
Any more questions from the board?
I don't want to muddy the waters.
Okay.
Because they're willing.
Close the public meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Jim, would you go through the variances, please?
One thing, the, just because I need to put my records, the I believe procedurally the board should decide if they are going to require a performance guarantee for raising the existing building because the criteria will be based on.
Because it'll affect the, how the.
On that as a factor, as opposed to going through the criteria and then going back, it's the way you've been doing anything that, that is conditioned.
Uh, uh, okay, I would make a motion that we go through the criteria considering that we will be requiring a performance guarantee of ten thousand dollars to, to guarantee the raising of the existing building within ninety days of receiving an occupancy permit. The, the performance guarantee has to be in place in order to receive a occupancy permit, not the building permit. They, they can receive the building permit without placing the bond, they have to, but before they can get a occupancy permit, they would have to put the bond in, shorten the amount of, shorten the amount of time you have to, we have to hold the money. The, and also, it, the, the bond can be in cash or a letter of credit. If it is a letter of credit, the letter, the, the term of the letter of credit would have to be at least a hundred and eighty days from the issuance of the building permit. So that would be ninety, ninety days to, to tear it down, and the letter of credit term would go another ninety days so that we would, the town would have time to exercise their option.
Okay, so the letter of credit must not expire until a hundred and eighty days after the occupancy permit.
Right. That, i- i- if you're gonna do cash, you don't have to worry about that. Okay, i- 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 if you've got the cash, ca- 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 cash is always simplest.
Right.
That, that's, people have done that.
Yeah.
So we'll tell you, let's keep this conversation going up here and then we'll fill you guys in.
All right.
Okay, that, that's my.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion? Does it have to be ten thousand? I thought we were gonna maybe think of a little bit less. We have this little lady here.
I, I gotta say, I, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with five, especially the fact that the lien goes to the property as a whole, not just to.
I, I, I think that.
And, in my opinion, any new construction in this town right now is far gonna exceed the cost of tearing down that old house.
That's for sure.
I know.
So, and that's why I really.
Upon the, upon the land.
Right.
No matter what's standing upon the land.
Well, yeah, besides that, considering that, that it doesn't have to be posted until they apply for a occupancy permit, that means the new building's gonna already be done.
Right.
Yes.
And the quicker they get it torn down, boom.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I am, I am quite okay with just about.
Leaving it at ten?
Any, any denomination, just because of what it can be attached.
Really?
Just because of what it can be attached on, I mean, in, in my opinion, it could be, you know, a hundred dollars, because if there's gonna be a lien on the property of the excess that it would cost to do it at an eighteen percent rate.
Yeah, but I, I, I think it has to be somewhere reasonable.
I'm just saying.
Right, and the lien.
And, and it sounds like the applicant is.
Willing.
Willing.
It's pretty sad if I can read your mind.
I was trying to find the right word.
And I, I know that.
I mean, it, 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 it sounds like ten thousand dollars would be workable.
Uh, and I understand that, I think, because she's probably my age, I think I'm older actually. You know, I, I, I just feel like. You know, I, I, I just feel like I, I'm taking that, not that age has anything to do with it, but residents in general, I don't care who they are. The environment that we're living in is very difficult. And to build a house, that's, God bless you for taking that on. I don't even know if I could do that. But I just wanted to throw that out there if it could be less, because I felt like five thousand I'm okay with, because there's a lien on the property. They can't do anything with that property, there'll be a lien on it. So that's our other, uh, back door into, into this whole thing.
If, if it's a dollar, it doesn't matter, because.
Because it's a lien.
The, the, the.
Right.
Again, and I'll, I'll go back to, I mean, we got we have mobile homes in the town that are going for four hundred thousand dollars right now.
Right, right.
So if she's building a brand-new, new construction house.
Yes.
I am just not concerned about.
Yep.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor.
No, we had a motion, and I screwed it up. Go ahead.
We have a motion on the floor, we'll second it. Is there any other comments about the motion? Jim, you want to take a roll call vote, please?
By the way, just double checking, this is still at ten thousand.
Yes.
Damn.
Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay.
So with that condition in mind.
We'll go through the, the applications.
The, I'll, I'll read the criteria and. With that criteria in mind, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes, but I have a question. Do we have to put a timeframe in there? That there will be only one house left on the property after?
My, my, my motion already said they got nine, nine, ninety days.
Okay. Thank you.
To tear it down.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
Criteria number four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Unnecessary hardship. Owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship, because no unfair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye, yeah, yes.
And the proposal is a reasonable one. Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, with that condition, the criteria have been met.
Thank you. Someone like to make a motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance. Uh, well, first of all, we should do the fi- finding of facts, the, 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 we, the board finds that all the criteria, with, with the condition which we had previously mentioned, all of the criteria have been met, and therefore, the variance should be right, uh, issued. Did we vote on the finding of fact, Jim?
That usually is the start of the motion.
So, so therefore, I, I move that we grant the variance. With, with the condition, what?
You're, you're granting the relief sought?
Really? Right, granting the relief sought with the condition which was previously stated.
Okay, and you're finding, in fact, that the plan falls within the scope of the purview of the planning board of a just, sorry, zoning board of adjustment, and the justice would be served by approving the application.
Exactly what I said.
Ms. Riordan?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Okay.
Sorry that was so painful.
Yes.
So, so the next process for us is now, do we go this way, or like, how would you, how would you get?
I don't think they can for thirty days still, though.
Yes, they can, at, at their risk. They, they, they can move forward, but they're, it, but they're at risk, uh, uh, i- i- if someone were to contest it.
Right, I, I will type up by Monday, a notice of decision that will be signed by the, the chair or the vice chair that will go through a distribution chain. However, it can't be recorded until the thirty days is done, because if somebody challenges it, you then need it to go to Superior Court. If the board were to reverse its decision. But Mr. Hamel is right. The applicant can proceed.
That is correct.
Knowing that they're a hundred percent at risk.
So can Kitty?
She, she looks confused what's being, what, what, what's being, what's being said. No, yeah, but, but, what, 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 what happens is, we approve the variance. Your, your, your neighbors who hate you have thirty days to object. If.
They didn't show up, so I'm feeling pretty good for you right now.
Yeah, so, so that if you start working on it now, and one of your abutters were to object, then you would, you would have to, you would get a cease and desist order, and you'd have to stop, and, and you would have to, we'd have to go through what, what, what their their objections are. But if, if, it, once you get the, the notice of decision, if no one, none of your abutters object, you, you're, you can go.
Oh, is it thirty days from today?
Yes.
Yeah, that, 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 that your abutters get.
She's not at the microphone. None of it will be recorded, I'm sorry.
Is it thirty days from today?
No, it's thirty days from the notice of decision.
Which will be Monday.
Or Tuesday.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
They could always have a conversation with our building inspector to further understand where they're at, correct?
Right.
Jim?
I think that was her question initially. What's the next step?
Yeah.
So I was asking if she could call you, and you could tell her what the next step is. Yes, and you didn't hear it, because she wasn't on the mic, so.
Right.
There you go. You're welcome.
When people don't talk at the mic, it doesn't make it in the minutes as you.
Right.
We end up with gobbled minutes like you saw.
Like last time, right.
Hey, let's continue on. We'll close the, the public hearing.
Close the discussion, so.
Are you gonna recuse yourself?
Yeah, so, for the next item, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes, we have a rehearing request, and, uh,
I'll be down to talk to you about the control burn.
Ms. White, would you like to sit in for, for Mr. Hamel?
Bye, we're close.
He's still on?
Yes.
I'll be seventy-six in July.
He's on, I don't, he muted, though.
Ms. Ms. White, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Uh, would you please sit in for Mr. Hamel? He's recusing himself. Did she say yes?
She doesn't have a choice.
Okay, all right, okay. Jim, you want to read off the request from Laura and silly, please?
Ms. Laura Minn and Seti? As president of the Greenfield Hill Estates Home Association, request a rehearing of the zoning board of adjustments decision for a variance issued to one twenty-five Development Corps from Article twenty-five, Section one, location on lot for a private driveway spanning four lots off Puzzle Lane. The lots are referenced as all on map fourteen, block one, lots one dash one, two, twenty-seven dash three, twenty-seven dash six, and twenty-seven dash seven.
I'll give a list, a little overview of how this process will be run. The board will decide if there was any new evidence to warrant a rehearing. They will be taking no evidence at this meeting, but would instead deliberate as a board on the matter. Should the board decide a rehearing is warranted, they will make a motion to grant it. The board must decide whether the argument put forth in the abutters paperwork rises to the level of new evidence, a compelling argument that should be further explored. If, if so, then a rehearing is in order. If not, there is no reason to hold a rehearing. Board members, I hope everybody's read through the application.
Only a few times.
Questions before we go further? If anybody have any that, how we're gonna deal with this? Ms. White?
I have no questions.
Anybody feels I need to read part of this over? Take your time.
No, I'll read it and take.
Mary?
Would you excuse me for a second?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you excuse me?
Yes, go ahead. Yep. Please let me know when everybody thinks they're ready to, uh, uh, discuss it. Any questions of anything you've taken a look at? The questions are within the board. There's no question. Yeah, give him, he had.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell you.
Okay, that's okay.
I apologize. One of your board members really worked us hard today, and.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
No, I, there, there was something I, it was on my list to print out my own copy, and it didn't get done.
Mary, you had a question within the group?
Uh, no, I don't see anything in.
Fresh?
Not me, no.
Jordan's still looking and reading, so give him a few moments. I personally have read it several times, I feel comfortable with what I've done.
I, I have too, I just, you know, we're now, now we're here, so I'm like, I should just probably read it like a seventh or eighth time.
Fine.
You all said, John? Is there any one of the board members want to make a motion? Ms. White, are you there, Ms. White?
Yes, I'm here.
Looking for a motion?
I guess I have a question. Um, if we're looking at this for some new evidence, I don't see any. So, if you're looking for a motion to deny this request, I'll make that motion.
Well, denial, or is there something new that we overlooked or whatever? Okay.
Right, and I don't see anything that.
Okay.
I don't see anything new that couldn't have been presented in the past.
Yeah, just, all I see is opinions, which, you know, we have, everything that I've read through, we have, you know, we have real estate studies.
There's a motion in the group to deny the.
So. I mean, I'll second it, because I do agree with.
Jim, you want to do a any questions from you, Ms. White?
No, I have no questions, thank you.
Jim, you want to, uh,
Hold the board?
Hold the board, please.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Riordan?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
The, Mr. Chair, the motion is unanimous.
Mr. Hamel, are you coming back to sit down? Ms. White, Mr. Hamel is back in as a voting member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCarthy? Your motion was to deny on the grounds of no new ele- no new evidence or compelling reason.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that's, someone want to make a motion to accept the minutes of one three twenty-four.
Move to accept the minute of one three twenty-four.
With, with the correction of my name in the first line.
I misspelled your name. In twenty-one pages, and.
Right out the gate, he misspelled it.
Like a hundred and fifteen different roles.
The silver.
It's funny, Jack was just asking me how to spell my name.
I knew, I, well, that's the way I spelled it, by one of the major, you're gonna be in the write-in ballot.
Excuse me, Mr. Hamel, but which, where did I misspell it?
On the, on the, uh, on the, uh, the who is present?
Okay, I will correct that. That was a scrivener's mistake.
Thank you, Jim.
So, do we have a second on the, cool minutes?
Second, yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Jim.
My first editorial perfection as a board member, I know.
Does everybody have a chance to look at the manifest?
Make a motion that we approve the manifest for payment for $66.33.
Boy, I have a motion. A second, excuse me, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay. Vote to adjourn at 8:30 PM.
One last thing.
Go ahead, Jim.
We have, everybody knows with the demise of the Carriertown News.
Yeah.
What?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Carriertown News is all done.
Obviously, you don't read it.
No, but my, everybody in, everybody else in the house does, and I do when I'm told I have to read it, you know?
Well, it was in, last week's news edition was the last one.
Ah, yeah, my kids were in that paper like our first year in town.
Yeah.
Therefore, going forward, at the next meeting, I will be bringing you a new fee schedule. Because the ad that, like for this, the public hearing this evening was $103 in the Carriertown News, that's now going up to at least $188.
Almost double.
So I will be adding $75 to the or actually, I should probably add $100 to the escrow deposit that people will have to make.
Yep.
I've been keeping track of the refunds that we've been making and regretfully, they range between 20 and $60. A lot depends on how many abutters you have. But I don't, I think I'd be doing the ZBA a disservice not to say I'd rather give back 60, even $100.
And ask for more.
Then have the board sit there and I go, excuse me, yes, you can open the public hearing, but you're gonna continue it until they give us enough to cover their costs.
Agreed.
Okay, I'm gonna mute my.
Can I, this is Barbara, can I say something? I'm thinking that maybe the board wants to think about for next year, it's too late to do anything now, doing something in the ordinances about two houses on a property and a bond. If we put it in the ordinance, then it's, you know, then it's there.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Ms. White, and I did say something to Jim about it.
Or possibly look into what Ms. McCarthy said about being able.
Becomes a lien on the property too.
Right, and personally, I think the lien on the property is twofold, it guarantee, it does the guarantee, it is less impactful on the applicant and it's surely has enough.
Right, but we, I think we need to get something in the ordinance specifically about one thing or the other then.
Good point.
If the town's gonna pay
to tear down a house. Yeah.
And say, we'll get the money eventually.
That actually is a better idea than, well, actually, something like $250 a day, that's, that type of a fine has incentive behind it.
It does.
The problem that you have is that if the fine isn't big enough, right at the moment, a one-bedroom apartment in Manchester is going for over two grand.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
So if a fine isn't big enough to make it worth tearing down the house versus renting it out, you know, people are going, okay.
So, and if we have a, you know, if this lien is, say, $10,000 and it goes up 18% annually, right?
Right.
I mean, yeah, if the town has to wait 15 years, guess what? We just made $600,000.
If we're looking at cash flow this month, not 15 years from now.
I understand cash flow this month, but we're, it, yeah, no, I.
I think we should talk about it and like Barbara says, let's come up with a plan, let's see what makes sense, and then we know by November, December, you know, do something that's gonna be a warrant article.
I will add this to my shortlist of things to really, you know, really, really on. As soon as things slow down after March.
We come up with some idea of changing the zoning like this. Well, all we can do is forward it to the planning board who actually.
Can put a warrant article on there.
We get a connection. But yes, but it's something, it's homework.
Yeah.
Yes. And it's also one of those things that, believe it or not, the ZBA can actually formally request the planning board place a warrant article.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that many years ago because we were getting so many people coming in to build a little shed in their backyard.
Oh, yeah, the under.
Yeah, you had to get it, you had to have it surveyed, it had to be X amount of 25 feet. So they were coming in left and right, you know, a lot of these, the smaller houses back 20, 25, 30 years ago, they wanted a place for their lawn mowers, gas and all that stuff. So we went to the planning board and we come up with 120 square feet, boom.
Yep.
You know, put it anyplace.
It's like 1,200 square feet, that sounds wrong altogether, and I was like, yeah, 120. I had the numbers right, just an extra zero.
That's the next level of.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Oh, Lord.
Well, I hope everybody's happy with the decision on the, for the.
Application for rehearing. I mean, I read it and I.
Mr. Coe?
Are you gonna join?
Can I suggest that that's an inappropriate discussion to have, you can have that with individual board members, but the board can't rehash.
Have you ended this recording on Zoom?
No, because the chair has not adjourned you yet.
Roger. Roger, you need to adjourn the meeting.
He got as far as, I adjourn at 8:00.
He said, he said he did it at 8:30, yeah.
Well, it's 8:37.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Ms. White.